All right. Good morning, everyone. It is June 3rd, 10:30. We are here to have a work session for the board to learn more about the pursuit and information special district and also water delivery and septic potential solutions in Twin Lakes. I think with that, too, I understand that we will hear a presentation on both of those things. I'm not exactly sure which community members are leading that. If Commissioner Fiedler or Marcela have any more comments to make before we get started, I'll invite them to do that and then turn it over to whoever is taking the floor first.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't have anything else to add today, so I'm ready to start.
I'll just say quickly, thanks to the two community groups from Twin Lakes and then from Twin Lakes and Gordon Acres and from Panarc to bring forward these ideas. Looking forward to hearing more, and I'm sure we'll have lots of questions going forward. But again, thanks for doing a lot of legwork to get these two ideas into really good shape for us to hear more about and see where to go from here.
Kurt, are you taking the lead on the first conversation?
I think so.
All right.
And John Kester and Robert Crable are here with me, and so they may chime in also on things. The subject that we want to talk about is potential for wastewater and potable water and also fire protection water in the village and also in Gordon Acres. And that's the general thought. First of all, thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it. This subject has been around a long time, and anybody who's lived here or has dealt with property development and property transfer knows about it, that it is a distinct challenge here in the village and end up in Gordon Acres. And it's only becoming more so as the time goes on and property transfers go on. But also, development pressure is here. And right along with that is the increase in use of the forest around us and the fire danger that goes right along with that. And now is as good a time as any, I think, to address it or start addressing it anyway. Actually, Kayla, do you have the, Commissioner Marcela, I'm sorry, do you have the items that I sent you?
The ones that you sent this morning? Yes. Yes. Which one would you like me to share on screen, Kurt?
Let's put up the first one, that is the situation with the wells and septic systems in the village.
Okay, just one moment. Yeah. Okay, it's the word document, correct, Kurt?
It is.
Okay. Okay, can you all see my screen? If this is the correct one, Kurt?
That is, yep.
Okay.
Thanks. I think this about says what needs to be said about the problem that we have here. The situation has developed over the last 160 years of individual wells and septic systems being built, rebuilt. And unfortunately, there's even still all these wells and septic systems that are probably in existence here. It's the ones that we know about or of course you have pretty good guess on. As you can see, the 100-foot radius around known wells really overlaps a lot of septic systems. And again, we don't know where all of the old septic systems are.
I wonder why I'm not getting any.
I'm sorry? So anyway, this illustrates the situation in the village. And it, Ms. Littlepage can attest, it does bring with it real problems of transfer title, but also with the general problems or potential problems with groundwater contamination and surface water contamination. As you can see, we have two streams running through the village. And to this point, we have not had any problems with those being contaminated that I know of. But they, both of them do drain right into the wetlands below the village, which drain into the upper lake. And we have, not just in the village and in Gordon Acres, but the larger area, Twin Lakes area residents are very concerned about the potential for contamination in the lakes, as I'm sure everybody will be. So that's an illustration of where we're coming from with the need to address this problem, this situation, and then need to move forward. Commissioner Marcela, could you go to the next slide, please? Commissioner Marcela?
Kayla, I think you were muted on that question.
Oh, sorry. Is it, I'm going to share this and you can tell me if it looks correct, Kurt?
Sure.
Is this the one?
Yes, it is.
Okay, perfect.
This, this problem that we're talking about with wastewater and potable water and, well, mainly wastewater, isn't anything new. This document is the addendum to the final environmental impact statement for the Brian Pan Arkansas project back in 1975. And as you can see, the Bureau of Reclamation was very concerned about the potential for our sewage system here becoming a problem in the lakes. And at the end of it, as you can see, they promised to cooperate with all involved parties from the private sector, the Lake County Commissioners, the zoning committee, and the US Forest Service and any other interested group or agency. The development of plans and estimates for North Shore sanitation system and will share the cost of preparation such plans and estimates. Okay, I'm not aware, I've done some research, I'm not aware that this went anywhere. But what it does illustrate is that at least as far back as 1975, there was a recognition that the septic systems here in the village were a problem and could potentially become a big problem with lakes. It will be interesting to follow this up and see if there's any potential for them to continue or help on this. I don't know, do any of the current commissioners have any knowledge of this situation? Way before your time.
Unfortunately, Kurt, this is Commissioner Marcela, and I do not have any information on this.
I don't have any more background on if you're asking the status of where any of this, many of these issues or concerns might have been pursued. But I do think that there's definitely opportunity to address it.
I don't think we have anything to lose by asking if they would be able to participate in this. Anyway, I just thought that was interesting that we could have something to reach that far back and the problem was recognized at least that far back and still has not really been addressed, you know, in a systematic manner, anyway. Ms. Littlepage deals with it all the time, and so does Building and Land Use. And hopefully that we can go forward and get some resolution. Commissioner Marcela, would you go to the next slide, please?
Yes, absolutely. Just one moment here, Kurt. This is the 1994 report cover, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, okay, let me share my screen here. Okay. This one?
That's it.
Okay.
Okay. It is that people didn't try to address this. Back in 1994, there was the attempt to establish a wastewater system for the village, or portion of the village, anyway. And this is the result from that. A team of students and at least one professor from CSU did this report for the village. And it was a preliminary design, I think it would be called that, for a wastewater system, secondary treatment system for the village. It didn't address Gordon Acres at all. It didn't address some of the territory that's considered to be within the platted area of the village. And but what happened with this, Commissioner, could we go to the next slide?
Yep, give me just one second, Kurt.
Can I ask a quick question while you're navigating that? The BOR statement that you had pulled up before, Kurt, what document does that live in?
That's in the final environmental impact statement for Brian Pan Arkansas.
Okay, okay. Do you know what page that was? I didn't see.
I could sure send it to you, too.
All right.
Okay, this is the drawing or the outline of the drawing for the collection system or treatment location that comes out of that 1994 document. And unfortunately, that up in the upper right, that possible location of treatment facility, that's where we're sitting right now. That's my house. So in a way, glad that they didn't put it there. But anyway, this is a very simple project. And I think they did a pretty good job on defining what could be done. I think they looked at three different options for treatment of the effluent coming out. And but again, this didn't go anywhere. The project was taken to the county commission to establish a special district. And there was, I wasn't here at the time, but I've been told that there was enough opposition within the local community that the commission turned it down. And to my knowledge, nothing has been done in the last 27 years on this. And it's possible that something has. I just have it on across it. But anyway, that's a very simple, again, preliminary plan. They did run some statistics on what it would cost to do this. What was it, $280,000, I think, total cost? But that was 27 years ago, and obviously, it's not going to be right now. And Robert, have the regulations changed much?
Well, Jack Littlepage knows, and there's a lot more stringent requirements here. But this system is a very simple system. They looked at two options, either leaving the septic tanks in place and just dealing with the effluent or replacing the septic tanks also and coming up with more complex treatment system. So they looked at the collection and the treatment system. The treatment, they looked at three possible options, constructed wetlands, a mound, land application for disposal of the effluent, and a package treatment plant. And the package treatment plant, I think, would be the most technologically savvy system here to try to achieve the metrics there for treatment. The key is one of the metrics that are required for the receiving water body. And that will be key in understanding a package treatment plant. So we're going to need some more analysis on that. The conclusion before was that a constructed wetland, but that's pretty low technology. Essentially a lagoon and holds the water long enough there that bacteria can treat it and releases back into the stream system.
Kurt, am I okay to stop sharing my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that I got through that for everyone. And then I can forward those documents to Sarah and Jeff, and then I'll also send a copy to Patty so that if anybody else needs a copy, they can get those.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. And that's a little background in where we are right now. Our local group here actually started about a year and a half ago, January 19th of last year, with a meeting here at my house. And that came about because there were some erroneous assumptions among people who were trying to develop or redevelop properties here in the village who assumed that if one person got a septic system, that a joining person could not. And that turned out to not be the case at all, and it was good to have that meeting. But one of the results of that meeting was, why don't we do something about this? You know, this situation is not going to stop. We have very small lots here. And again, as the first slide showed, they're on top of each other. And that's not a situation that's going to fix itself. There was also a concern that, a concern that wells would be contaminated and that periodic testing was not going on in the wells for most of the properties here. Certainly, it is for the inn, and I think at least the inn has periodic testing, monthly testing. And Motelwood Lodge. So that's the force of this movement to try to address the problems. And right now, what we have done is we requested the commission to do two things. One is to more or less recognize and cooperate with our local committee here and in allowing us, essentially, allowing us to go ahead and do some more investigation, looking for grant funding, and again, checking with the Bureau of Reclamation, checking with the Arkansas, what's it called? Mr. Mudge? Yep, Arkansas.
The Arkansas Basin Roundtable?
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And so we have quite a bit more work to do, but we'd like to get on it because we have a potential for funding that is being proposed and is already, may already be available for this kind of study, upfront study, engineering study to prepare, well, to prepare an engineering plan as feasibility study so that we have what could be considered a shovel-ready project when and the additional funding becomes available, infrastructure funding becomes available. Now, that kind of funding isn't necessarily dependent on the big infrastructure plan. There are already EPA and USDA funding sources for wastewater and potable water development. And that may also be for fire protection, but I haven't been to that source yet. So basically, what we're doing is we're getting ready, we're doing background research, or we hope we will if the commission allows us to do that. We have within our local community here and our committee good technical capability. We have certainly the interest both in the village and the Gordon Acres and in the wider community to address these problems. What we don't have is the authority to be, in the sense of going after statements of qualification, finding an engineering firm that we need to have, and then also really building down on potential funding sources. So that's the first thing that we're requesting the commission to at least consider and work with us. We're ready to work with you at any time. And I think we can keep quite a bit of the load off your backs for planning a project like this, whichever way it goes, whether it's just a wastewater project or both wastewater and potable water or and/or sometimes pressurized water delivery system for firefighting. So that's the first thing that we're requesting from the commission. The second is a piece of the funding that is coming down from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And I may have some old information there, but the latest information I have is that the county will receive about a little bit over $1 million from that fund. And of that, we're requesting $50,000 to be set aside for funding an engineering study for our engineering and feasibility study for wastewater, potable water, and fire protection water for Twin Lakes and Gordon Acres. And that's about just a little bit over 3% of the funding coming down. And so with that, I would certainly entertain questions or comments. Can we do this?
Yeah, I can start with a couple. First of all, thanks again for pulling this information together. And, you know, I love it when problems come with some actual clear ask and lots of the background work done. So and, you know, I'd welcome, you know, either now or sort of down the road when they've had more time to review, you know, all the documents you have. You know, I'd love public health or building land use to weigh in on some initial thoughts or questions they have. But, you know, for me, I mean, it seems to make sense, sort of technically, and for public health. You know, certainly, it just seems like if we continue in the situation we're in, it's going to either impose very significant costs and sort of for highly engineered septic systems on landowners there, and at some point, it's going to deter development and any new business expansion. You know, or it's going to cause a big public health problem. Or it's just going to continue to put public health in the position of, you know, having to spend a lot of time and effort handling variances. And to me, I mean, variances serve a role, but they also at some point mean that your rules aren't working if you keep having to give variances to them. So anyway, so just to say, like, my initial sense is that this seems like a real problem that needs to get addressed. I think the one question and the thing that I would really like to sort of include in any planning work that gets funded is digging into the costs of this. You know, I think, I also, I mean, I think you've been very upfront in like pulling together some of the kind of valuation tax base, you know, numbers for the area that is being considered here. But I think, you know, really getting a handle on what the upfront costs are, the operating costs, but also thinking about like the long, you know, way down the road, like, you know, the renovation and replacement costs, because one thing I want to make sure we don't dump in the laps of commissioners and the communities that are like 30 years down the road is a big expensive piece of infrastructure we can't afford to renovate or replace, you know, just given the tax base that's there. So anyway, just to say, you know, it seems to me like an important idea to dig into more and do some planning. But I really want to make sure we put the, you know, the sort of like full kind of lifetime and even replacement costs, you know, just get a handle on that and think through where the funding streams are going to come from to make this happen.
Absolutely. One of the reasons that we, well, let me back up a little bit. Steve Erickson is on, and Steve was here in 1994 when this was tried previously and failed. And at that point, they had proposed a special district. And it did get to the commission and then was rejected. But your point, Commissioner, is very well taken. We can't plan for the next five years. We have to plan for, kind of forever and be able to establish a support mechanism, financial support mechanism to be at. The question is, when do we put that mechanism into place? And personally, I think it would be difficult. I think it would be better if we had a better idea of what we can accomplish with grant funding upfront. That is the planning, the design, and the construction phase. And then also, right along with that feasibility study, a pretty good idea of what it's going to cost to operate these systems. And at that point, we have good information to take to the property owners and say, well, it's going to cost some money, and it's going to continue to cost some money to operate these systems. But here is what the best estimate is to do that. So that's my own personal opinion. It's a chicken and egg kind of thing. But that's my personal opinion on this. So I agree with you.
I don't know.
We have other comments from members joining. I see Christine, Kealan?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you, yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
You guys are unmuted. I'm just wanting to make sure that you have an opportunity to chime in if you are intending to.
I, you know, I would like to say this is, I'm the president of Panarc Homeowners Association. The massive growth we've had here in the last year has been unbelievable. And I can see that a strong need for having something of this, like this nature done here before it's too late. We don't want to get people sick. I think we need to look at this whole area because it's growing so quickly. And I'm sure Gordon Acres is in the same position, so I think it's very important that we address this now. And I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, and I think this project has great potential. And, you know, given the climate that we're in... And, you know, given the climate that we're in as well with funding coming down different pipelines, the iron is hot to get prepared. And I understand that, you know, a brief conversation I'd had with Kurt on getting some of this engineering documentation and these plans prepared, that the sooner we can do that, the better we can be, well, the more competitive a application and pursuit of combining funding we will have.
I don't, I don't think that I necessarily have a whole lot of questions other than what our first step would be now that we've had this preliminary conversation with information, then what is our next, next step in terms of any kind of deliverable or partnership?
Well, that is a good question. I would think that that the first thing we need to do is, if it's acceptable, is to find, get out a statement of a project statement and see where we have interest from engineering firms to do this and preliminary, at least preliminary, costs to do it. That isn't promising anything. And we would make a very clear to the engineering firms that the money is probably not currently available, but maybe come available soon. And you all know what the, what the situation is with every, every consulting company in this, in this area. It's hard to get anybody to do anything before fall now, including the digging ditches. But, but I would think that that would be the first thing to do is to get a request for interest out there to several good engineering firms. I don't know that we need to go to competitive bid on that kind of thing. That's a professional services kind of thing. And we would look for, I would think we would look for experience in the area to begin with because we do have some unique situations here with lots of rocks, for one thing. And also groundwater situations and surface, high surface water situations. So we would probably look at those and make sure that we're getting getting a fairly good estimate on what it would take to do. And then look at, you know, several months down the road, having that document done so that, and done to the extent that it is a pretty much a shovel ready project. Hardly any project is ever 100% designed. The board has to go out and there are always, almost always changes in the contracting process to do the actual construction. But we get pretty close, I think.
Thanks, Kurt. I don't, I don't think that I have anything, anything else other than that right now.
I think, I think it's worth, yeah, having that discussion and or putting, scheduling this again to get something formal out. And as I discussed with Kurt as well, you know, Kurt, maybe we and whoever is more intimately involved in some of this planning, we all can organize and schedule some meetings with roundtable folks and also that St. Charles Mesa district that had done something a bit similar and have presented to the roundtable some time ago. And we can, we can just start learning, learning more from folks who have kind of retrofitted an area with a delivery system like this before.
Yeah, it is, it is a unique system that we're not designing a new or doing a new development. We're doing something that's been there and in use for 160 years. And the small lot size is an incredible problem, situation. But we also have, on the other side, as was, as Christine mentioned a little while ago, we've got tremendous development pressure here. And every building that we have here in town could be in good productive use, either residential or more commercial right now if we have better septic systems.
Are there other comments from community members?
This is me with Parkville. I thought I'd chime in quick. I don't have much to speak to the sanitation portion, but as far as the water distribution portion, I think Parkville is more than willing to look at ways to participate, possibly help find funding and also manage a water, pressurized water distribution system. And I think maybe Kurt, to one of the things you spoke to, there are quite a few funding sources for design and engineering that I've looked into that tend to, like you said, only be available to either government or municipalities. So we're willing to look into those, too.
Great, thanks, Cody.
Can I make a quick comment?
Please.
Hi, I'm a part-time resident. And first of all, I want to thank the commissioners that they took time for this meeting. And I also want to point out how much work Kurt put into this. You probably saw from the packet that he submitted, how detailed, how much background information he has. So you can already see, you don't just have willing participants, but people that actually put in a lot of work and not just work, but really cool, detailed, knowledgeable work. And if a staff member had prepared that for you, you can probably estimate yourself how many hundreds of hours you would have already spent on that, that you got free labor from somebody like Kurt and the other people in town. So that's really amazing. I'm a recent, recently, I mean, more recent owner there. And so, yes, responding to Jeff, yeah, we had to go through variances for both our well and our septic. And our project and then other neighbors recently or shortly coming up, you know, to drill a new well or to install a new septic system. I'm sure among the six or seven of us, you know, we have or will spend, you know, upwards of $150,000, you know, because they're expensive. And so this is ongoing. And so I would add a sense of urgency that the county moves as quickly as possible because the funding is there right now. And we have already a good, good, good proposal there from Kurt. And not to sound too alarmist, I mean, now we have a modern system, but, you know, my wife and I, we're totally in support of this. And I think, you know, when it comes to a fire or when it comes to, you know, contaminated areas, it probably is just the question of when, not if. And so I think the sooner this gets addressed, the better. And there are great solutions. And I actually like the built wetland solution the best myself. But, you know, that's up to the engineers to find out what's, what's the price tag and how it can be done. And so I want to thank again Kurt and all the other people that have contributed to this application. And I hope you can move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that Robert brought up this morning was a question to me, and that is, is the Forest Service properties, would they be included in a particularly a potable water system, but also the wastewater system? Tremendous demand in much more all the time, both for source of water and also better, better toilet situation here in town. And actually, I was on the call with the, what's it called? The Top of the Rockies, CNA Byway Planning Commission. And the number one issue that all of the respondents had was we need better toilet facilities and more of them. And we all recognize that. I've had a very brief conversation with the local ranger here, Patrick, and we didn't take it any farther than that. But they certainly have had challenges the last two years. And there are no water field situations in the, in the developed campgrounds here. And more and more people all the time, last summer, we had maybe 10 people a day come to the visitor center needing water. And there was no place for public water here in the town.
I'm actually not in the campground, Steve.
Or the campground.
Yeah, I'm understanding the stakeholders on the project. That the 1994 study focused on 36 homes within the village. So you have the homes and then you've got the businesses that have the lodging. You've got the general store. And then if you add in Gordon Acres, that maybe adds another 30 homes. But then who else is a stakeholder? We saw the Bureau of Reclamation was certainly interested in water quality of the lake. Forest Service has a tremendous use for the visitor center. And so the stakeholders keep expanding. Maybe there's any sort of potential to add in Panarc. So, you know, when this goes for permit approval with CBHE, Colorado Public Health and Environment, that they're going to request that this is a regional system and they're going to be asking how many people are going to be tapping onto this system. So as we get more and more stakeholders, the funding issue in the operation fund gets solved a lot easier than trying to put in an expensive system for 30 homes.
Apologies if I missed this. Is there an RFQ already prepared?
No.
Okay.
Is that, is that something that we, we can assist with? Or would it be, would it be appropriate for us to assist with that?
Well, since it's very likely going to come from your office, yeah.
Okay, Sarah, I have a template for an RFQ or RFP that I would be happy to send so we can start putting in some plug and play type of thing there, if that would be appropriate.
Excellent.
Yeah, Kurt, what I'll do is I'll connect with you on that. And then you can, you can help me put the specifics in that and then we can share that with the board.
Very good. Thank you.
I also had shot out a request over the last day for that project, Kurt, the St. Charles Mesa. I know the commissioner that made that presentation is no longer serving as a commissioner, was term limited. So I'll figure out what in all, you know, documentation that might, might help us there as well.
You bet. That would, that would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
So do you want to segue into the district conversation specifically?
I'm here. That would be great.
If I could just make one quick, I think, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, among our follow-up steps that we, you know, make sure to get, you know, sort of comments and involvement for, you know, obviously from public health, from, you know, from land use and probably other departments I'm not thinking of properly. But, you know, I think obviously especially public health needs to be at the table on formulating that RFP and just, you know, making sure we got all our questions lined up to start getting answered.
Thanks, Jeff. I definitely will make sure that I include Jackie in that as well.
Well, thank you all. I sure appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to the team and the community out there.
Yeah, I've gotten pats on the back here, but we do have a solid team, both in terms of technical capability and experience, but also interest, strong interest in moving this down the road. So it's not just me. Certainly, it's a bunch of good people.
Absolutely. Great. Commissioner Feeler, do you have any other comments to introduce Christine and the next topic? Nope. Okay. Great. Christine, then, do you want to? It sounds like you were going to give us a brief overview of that.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you very much. I thank you very much for allowing me to present this to you today. I am the current, current president of Panarc Homeowners Association. And we are in the process of trying to get a service plan through for our association. The background is the HOA is funded entirely through voluntary payment of property owners. Currently, only about one third of our property owners pay membership dues. As a result, the HOA has been unable to finance and acquire equipment necessary for proper maintenance of public roads, public improvements, which have benefited the community. There are no existing government entities has it willing to do this for us, so it's, it's totally private. So thus, after careful analysis and projections for the cost of providing such community services, the HOA Board of Directors has determined the formation of a metropolitan district which would raise revenues by an operating mill levy and transfer of ownership and responsibilities for maintaining these public improvements to the district would be the most effective way to serve the community. It is anticipated the HOA would dissolve after successful organization of the district and transfer assets to the district. So this is something we've been mulling over here for a long time. We just don't have the money coming in. There's no way to get people to pay their dues except by doing something like this. I would like to also say that we sent informative letters to all the homeowners here, asking them to respond through postcards. We had overwhelmingly favorable response. Very few, we had a few people quite upset about it. But again, I will say that the past two years, that we have had three homeowners out here that have been doing all of the plowing in the wintertime for nothing or almost nothing. And we just cannot keep doing this. It's just too hard on all of us and we need to get something done. We feel it's time that people pay their fair share. And we just aren't getting them to do it. The most pressing public improvement for the district to operate and maintain the roads. An estimate of initial anticipated costs of maintaining roads within the district's boundaries, including financing, the acquisition of road grader, which we don't have. Our road grader died about a year and a half ago. We can't get parts for it, so we just, we, we got rid of it. And because they no longer make parts. Other appropriate necessary equipment and labor for maintenance and snow removal of roads, that's what this money would go towards. The district is not currently anticipated to construct any land or public improvements, rather, all public improvements would be dedicated to the HOA at no charge. District may provide for operation and maintain, maintenance of other public improvements as determined from time to time by the duly elected district board, which will have the flexibility to adjust to the future needs and conditions of the district's constituents. Since no, since no new public improvements are planned, there at this time, there is no need for a preliminary engineering or architectural survey or a general description of the facilities to be constructed and the standards of such construction. Any facilities or improvements constructed by the districts in the future will be designed and constructed in accordance with the standards and specifications of the county. I'd like to conclude, and this, again, this is part of our statement here, our, our plan, our service plan. The HOA has served the Panarc States Community since its formation in 1977. It has evolved with the community, but its independence upon voluntary payment of membership dues has led the board to the determination that establishment of the district is the only responsible and sustainable path to provide quality service to the Panarchist community. It is in the best interest of the community to have a financial stable organization capable of maintaining and providing public improvements for the benefit of the entire community. Financial responsibility should not be placed on the few. Financial responsibility should not be placed on the few. I want to say the few who pay membership dues, but should be shared fairly by all the residents and taxpayers who benefit from the shared community assets and public improvements as required by Section 32-1-203, etc. So this is this is how we came about this. We do understand that there is a typical fee for adding this to the ballot. And since this district will benefit both the county and Panarc residents, we are hoping that the county will consider waiving this cost. If not, would you allow us to pay it back to the county once the district is formed? So that's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Daryl Manning is on board now. I know if Mike O'Leary is here, they're both. Mike O'Leary is former president of the board and Daryl Manning is on the board with me right now. So if you have any questions, I'm open to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I admittedly always feel like I need to learn more about special districts and the creation and operation of them. You threw a lot at us right there, and I don't think I caught everything. I apologize. But I'll offer, Daryl, go ahead.
I submitted the service plan and a lot of that was in this, what I just stated. So and Jeff has that, I believe, and you have that and you can look at that at your leisure. So.
Thank you. The question on the ballot, the creation of the special district, that is that for the that is for the property owners of that? That would be the boundary of the special district.
That's correct. Daryl, you want to say something?
Yes, the the person's eligible to vote on the special district would be those persons, those individuals who own property within the proposed district and are registered voters in Colorado. Those they would be eligible to vote on. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. It took me a minute to hit mute button there. Thank you, Daryl.
Okay.
Any? I mean, it's nice to hear that you had already surveyed a lot of your property owners. You know, it does seem like this is a really precarious position to be in as property owners out there with HOA set up as it is. I mean, I don't I don't have any big questions for you personally. Offer any other comments either from Mike, hi, Mike O'Leary, or or the the board. And the cost, Christine, what was that? That you you would ultimately be seeking consideration? For waiver or some sort of thing?
We're looking, it's in the budget and you should have a copy of that, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Going back and forth between the applications is not.
I got it. I think we're talking we're talking operating budget of close to $100,000 a year. As I said, right now, our roads haven't been graded at all this summer. They're terrible because we don't have a grader. One of my biggest concerns, and I've expressed this many times, is that we can't get a loan because we can't show. We can't show, I mean, if people just volunteer to pay, you know, we're trying to get a loan to buy a grader. We can't get a loan. We spent a lot of time working on trying to get a USDA loan to help us with a grader. And we just we couldn't get it. Once we form this metro district, which shows this steady income, there is money available. Like you said, there's grant money out there. There's money, you know, it's really, really not pretty cheap money that can help us out. But right now, we just our hands are tied. We just can't can't do it. So anyway, Daryl, do you have something to say about that?
Yeah, I would like to add, you know, our major problem out here is, of course, road maintenance. And it's not just snow plowing in the winter, but it's also grading the roads and maintaining the roads during the summer because the roads will develop a lot of washboarding and a lot of potholes with the traffic that's going over them. The way our road, the way our subdivision is set up, the the actual roadways are owned by the adjoining property owners. In other words, each individual property owner owns the property out to the center of the road. So the roads are all privately owned. There is an easement across those across the properties there that's dedicated to public use so that other homeowners and guests can, you know, drive across that property. Under such a situation, you have, in theory, you have a legal obligation by all of the property owners to contribute to the maintenance of the roads by them, you know, being able to use that easement. Our major problem, of course, has been, as Christine said, is that the dues for the home, we don't have any way to enforce collection of dues for the HOA. So the dues become voluntary voluntary. And we have only, say, a third of the property owners out there contributing to road maintenance. And that really does not provide us with enough revenue to do the proper to do proper maintenance on the roads. We can only afford to, say, run a grader. And the last couple of years, we've had to hire someone to bring a grader out to our property, out to our subdivision and run it over the grader. And that's very expensive. We can only afford to do that maybe about two or three times a year. And that doesn't keep up with the, you know, the damage it's caused to the roads by the traffic. So what we're trying to do by creating a special district is actually spread out the cost of maintaining the roads to all the property owners out there instead of just one third of them. So to make it, you know, even and, you know, more fairly distributed. And by doing so, we think we can probably collect a little bit more revenue, you know, increase our revenue to a point that would allow us to properly maintain those roads out there. And it has an effect also on emergency services because, you know, fire, ambulance, you know, or other emergency services cannot, you know, sometimes have difficulty getting out there because if, you know, if the roads are in poor condition, they can't get out there to provide services for us.
I'd like to add some, the other issue is that all of our, because we, Mewa Water is our water supplier here. Our water lines are in our roads. And if the roads are not maintained properly, that threatens our water lines. And so we're running into that issue, too, right now, that we don't have, you know. It's odd that that Mewa and our HOA aren't one in the same because we 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 help everybody out, but there's been such a resistance to that over the years that they don't want that to happen, which makes absolutely no sense to me. But that's what's happened in the past. And we just weren't, and again, back to the growth issue. We have had, I mean, Paul contested this, we have, the building out here is huge. And we have contractors running up and down these roads with equipment and beating up the roads terribly. And we can't ask them for any money. We don't have any control over anything right now. And we just, it's gotten worse and worse and worse. And that's the situation. We just can't do it. The last thing I'll say is that many, this whole subdivision was drawn up on a grid. And I heard it was done in Great Britain back in whenever. And so men, some of the roads aren't even on this grid. They're roads that were added on later. I mean, I live on a road. It's called No Name because they don't have a name on our road. Because the only way to get to our properties is on the ridge on top. You can't get down to it from Perry Peak. So, I mean, we, the roads are a major concern here, and I think we just need to get this figured out. And again, with the number of people building here, you know, and it needs to happen. So that's a wrap. Thank you.
It seems, oh, go ahead, Mike. Oh, you're muted. Mike, you're muted. Can you hear me? There you go.
A couple of years ago, a fire truck came out here and tested a couple of the roads to see if they could get down the road in the middle of the winter. They couldn't do it. We don't have the money to reengineer the roads to accommodate emergencies. That is a huge factor that whereby we would use the money to reengineer some of these roads to accommodate the increased demand of people that live out here.
Amen. That's true. Yep.
It sounds like the obvious improvement would be a kind of a consensus and a shift to the fee structure and operational structure so that you have the money to address these things. What do you anticipate the, you know, that that that? How do you anticipate that district being run? You know, who then, how then would you have a more? How, sorry, how would you anticipate having committed employees to the district or that framework? Do you yet know?
Well, Daryl, you want to talk about that or should I say, Daryl?
See, I can try that. The part, okay, part of the issue is finding operators. If we had the money to pay operators and we had our own grader, hire some equipment operators to come out, take our grader and run it up and down the roads. Also, as far as, you know, road maintenance and design, you know, we would be able to hire, probably hire some consultants in order to provide expertise that we don't have within the subdivision in order, you know, to advise us as to how the how the roads should be maintained. You know, what sort of base we should put on them, how they should be designed, that sort of thing. The, of course, the same thing goes. And as far as employees also, not just road graders, but snow plow, you know, plowing the roads in the wintertime, the last couple of seasons, I think, as Chris mentioned, we've essentially had just volunteered, basically board members and some other, a couple of other residents that have volunteered their time to actually run our snow plow up and down the road. And we don't anticipate that that's going to be, that we're going to be able to maintain that for a long time. And we will have to be able to hire, pay for someone to operate those, that equipment also, snow plows and road graders. They wouldn't necessarily be full time employees, you know, we'd be able to hire somebody either part time or on a contract basis. If that's.
That, no, that's that's helpful. And I expect that some of the folks and residents and your neighbors that are involved now would continue to be involved in kind of that overall operations and direction and management of the special district. And that would be a lot easier with the dedicated funding source.
Right, well, as towards the, of course, the special district will operate with a board also. And we're anticipating a five member board. Like we have now, we have a five member board. I think persons, I think anyone who owns property within the district is eligible to run for the board of directors, and that would be an election. That would be, we'd have staggered terms for the board members. And then they would be, they would go up with that, there would be an election for board members. So you'd have, we'd have to have people who would actually be, you know, interested in being on the board. And then they would run for office. But it would still be, the board members would still be within our community.
Yep.
Christine, the 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 particular ask of the board or the county is to consider a waiver of the fee to get this onto the ballot. What what? What is that cost?
I'm not quite sure. I'm sorry. I can't tell you exactly, but I guess some cost involved if we add this to the ballot in November. And I'm not sure what that cost will be.
I see the county clerk is online here. Patty, do you have any information for us there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, the, yeah, this, the statute goes back to 32 on special districts. If the service plan was filed, it's supposed to have been filed with the county clerk on behalf of the board. So I don't know where the service plan is. There's a timeline outlined in statute about how many days before it moves forward. There is a whole process for this, and it has to go to district court once you accept and approve the service plan. So, I mean, there are many steps to this. The filing fee is $500 to file the service plan. So I think we're getting perhaps the end result that we want way before the beginning.
Yeah, I understand that. So.
Yeah. And and maybe just my understanding is, yeah, like the, you know, the the steps are, and there are probably some intermediate steps here is, I think the next steps for us as the county and the BOCC is to, I think, sort of like informally run this by, you know, each each department or all the relevant departments and elected official, you know, that departments. But then we need to hold a public hearing, you know, to consider it, and then a BOCC vote. And then, you know, once the BOCC has approved it, because this sits in the county, I don't think the city has any.
Correct.
Decision. You know, then the petitioners file in district court and district court reviews to make sure everything's legally appropriate. And then it is, you know, ready to go to, you know, to actually go on the ballot to get established and approve the mills and elect, you know, the board and all that stuff. But I think I think the first step is for us to sort of, you know, do our due diligence with the county departments to review the service agreement and then hold a public hearing. And I think it's been a while since we've done that as a county. So I probably need to, you know, make sure we run that process right. And, you know, whether it's, you know, as, I mean, I think it's like somewhat similar to a CUP, you know, public hearing and approval, where we might need sort of like a staff memo with a recommendation and sort of some summary of the back and forth that's gone on with the referring, you know, the referral to departments.
Go to planning and zoning, too.
So does the.
Got it, too.
Is there a service plan? It sounds like Patty doesn't have a current service plan on record.
I do not.
Not. And Daryl, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the original intent of this meeting with with the board was essentially to inform the board of what we're trying to do and see if there were any serious objections to what we're trying to do. We haven't actually filed a formal plan yet. But if if we don't hear any significant objections to what we're trying to do, then we are going to, we're intended to move forward with this and go ahead and file the plan formally and start the official process with it. But we didn't want to, you know, waste a whole lot of money if we knew we were going to run into some real objections to it. So we're not, I don't think we're really asking for the board at this time for formal approval. We have to go through the process with that.
No, yeah, it does. It sounds like there's definitely more steps to that public input. But I don't, I mean, personally, I, you know, I think this is, it seems long overdue in getting some stable framework created to address this. And also, so you're not spinning your wheels out there as volunteers trying to manage something without any resources to do so makes, I mean, makes sense to me as an individual commissioner. And and so then I would imagine through that process of district court and public hearings, the ballot, do you anticipate the ballot initiative to be a 2022 potentially? Or did you think that that might happen within this year?
We're hoping within this year. Yes.
Yeah, I think we're hoping to do it this year. We'll have to get, like I said, we'll have to go through the formal formal filing of the plan, get approval from the board, go to district court. I know it's going to be close, but we're hoping to get it on the November ballot.
So I just, and I guess I have a question both in terms of like making sure we're not getting crosswise with the proper procedure. But it seems to me that it would be helpful to informally run this draft service agreement by the relevant county departments and just sort of flag any. by the relevant county departments and just sort of flag any any elements you might want to, you know, quickly include or modify before you file and start the formal process. So I guess my question is, does, does that seem helpful and is it a legally correct process, or are we sort of like getting ahead of ourselves?
But I I don't know, Darrell, how you feel, but I personally think it's probably a good idea, so.
Uh, yeah, I think so. If, uh, you know, if we could get them to give us an informal or informal comments on it, yeah.
Chris, does that, can you provide to them?
Yeah, that's, I was just going to chime in. I think you'd have to be very clear that this is an informal initial draft request. Um, a- and of course, any comments or whatever, given at this stage would not be binding uh in relation to review of the actual final draft that was submitted. So, but I I agree with Commissioner Fiedler that it probably makes sense to um allow the benefit of some weigh-in by other agencies before the the draft is finalized.
I would, I would be able to take that to like Public Health and Building and Land Use. Sarah would take that to Public Works. Is that, that's kind of what you're anticipating, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. I I wouldn't have any problem doing that and scheduling um us to review that within the next couple of weeks. Because it sounds like if if that is something that is anticipated to attempt um to go through quickly this year, um, we'd, we'd want to go through that rather fast, right?
Yeah, this is Chris again, and I I was just going to suggest uh that Mr. Manning might want to reach out to the clerk of the district court um to ask about their, their already scheduled dockets and such. I know coming off of the pandemic um and the the time that the courts were closed, they have a pretty substantial backlog of cases uh for review. And so part of my concern, I would hate for y'all to go through all of the the hoops to to get this teed up for November and then find out that the court can't review it in time to complete the process.
And 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 also wanted to add, I mean, I I don't mean to complicate the process with this informal step first. I mean, I think, you know, having kind of skimmed the service agreement in its current draft form, it looks well thought through and you've done your homework. So, I mean, I, I'm also open to just launching right in to the kind of public hearing process, and the departments would be referring agencies there too. Um, so if, if doing this informal step for a couple of weeks, like, starts to cause real problems for the timeline for twenty-one, you know, I, I mean, I think it's kind of up to the petitioners uh, you know, on 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 managing the timeline.
Yes, I
We also wanted to just, I'm sorry.
I hope that's the case, because I think we really do want to get going on this, because we have big things that need to be done, so thank you.
We also wanted to just see if y'all had, if if you had any questions, any specific questions about, you know, for more information that you would like to have that aren't addressed in the um draft of the service plan. You know, we could go ahead and add that, that information and try to answer those questions before we submit something formally. If you have any sort of questions that we need, that we think need to answer, then, you know, we certainly appreciate y'all, uh, if you would, uh, go ahead and let us know.
This is Chris again. I was just going to ask Ms. Berger if by chance she readily knew what the first deadline would be for submission of something um like this for the ballot.
I, it's, most of the ballot uh information has to be given to me by early September. I'm not sure you're going to get in, i- if, get it in in time to do that. Uh, it would be, we could have another election just for the Penn Ar people, if that's the way it works, if it's not going to work out to where it can be part of the November election, it would have to stand alone.
Yeah. Um, is there any way that that we could have our informal conversations with our departments, Sarah and Jeff, and then have an additional work session like this to bring that information back to the group? Can we set a date to do that in the next couple of weeks? Or does that sound too rushed, or what do you, what do you guys think?
I think we could do, I mean, it's, it's pretty, I mean, no, uh, don't take this the wrong way, but I mean, it's a pretty simple service agreement that, I mean, like, it's not a highly complicated thing that's being proposed here in terms of the road, so.
Right, so could we, could we maybe like have an additional work session on this on like the seventeenth at ten? To discuss um any of those items that we've may have discovered from our departments.
Um, yeah, I think I was looking through that week too, and and that sounds like a good uh goal.
Okay, so let's plan on the seventeenth then at ten. Um, and I can get that posted on our calendars.
Do you want us included in that, on that session?
Yeah, I think it would be a great idea if if this group can come back together uh on the seventeenth.
Okay. Are you available, Darrell? He's muted, you're muted.
Yeah, I I think he's waving that he is. Okay.
Yes, I'm available, yes.
Okay, well, so Chris, um, Chris, Darrell, uh, we'll, we'll be sure to get that, get that posted on our um, on our weekly planner, and it'll be the same Zoom information, but we'll plan for the seventeenth at ten AM.
One final question. Uh, sorry, my apologies. One final question for the Penn Ar folks. Do y'all have an attorney that you're working with on this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I I'm sorry, I was just asking if you're, you have an attorney that you're working with on this?
We do, we do.
Can you tell me who that is?
Um. What's his name? Um, Joe, well, Joe Norris and David Greer.
David Greer.
David Greer, Joe Norris, and they are, I think they're located in Summit County, I believe. Is that right?
Right. Yeah, I think so, and he's, he is the same, uh, their same firm that helped with the metro, the metro district for the hospital.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And. Uh, Paul, go ahead.
All right, actually, Chris Floyd, that was the, the question that I was going to ask. I also might ask, do you have any professional financial advice?
No.
There are firms located throughout the state that your attorney can probably help you with that help you administer special districts, and I think those same firms can help walk you through the uh, the legal process. Um, I I think it's probably more important to have an attorney on board. Um, but I really think you need some professional financial advice on these matters as well. Um, and I think your, your attorney can advise you who that, who that might be. Are you um calling yourselves a metropolitan district?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Darrell.
Yeah, at this time, yeah, that's, that's the proposed.
So metro districts require that there be two or more services.
Correct.
Which are the two services, the street improvement and?
I'm thinking that at this point, it's going to be also um uh waste room, garbage removal that we don't have right now.
Solid waste disposal.
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah, we, we have a couple dumpsters, but it's voluntary and paying, and so I think we're trying to get a handle on that right now, so.
And what about the um water, Christine?
At this stage, yeah, at this age, we're probably the future looking at water, but the way it, we're going to not do it at this point. But that's another whole, and another entity, I think. Darrell, you agree with that, or what are you thinking?
Uh, yes, that's, yes, we're, we're not planning to include the water district or the water company in the district to stop. But it may be, we may come back later on and try to add it.
Yep.
Remind me, the, the water fees are not um voluntary?
No, they're not voluntary, or you don't have water. It's one or the other.
Just wanted to reiterate that, thank you.
Yeah.
The water is a separate entity from a uh HOA, and uh it operates independently. And um, yeah, it collects, it collects its own water fees, and if you don't pay, then they can shut your water off, so. Um, but also, I think there's some issues with the there are some problems uh with combining the water dis, the water company at this time, NEWA at this time, because they do have some FDA loans, or they're trying to get some FDA loans, and apparently that would cause some problems uh trying to bring that into the
Yeah, USDA.
The district. I'm not sure about the exact legal uh problems there, but uh that's what I understand, that there, there would be some problems combining that into a special district.
Okay. Paul?
I've, um, yeah, I'm presuming that your boundaries are going to be the three sections of land that comprise one A, B, and C.
Correct, yes.
That's correct.
Um, and you are aware of the difficulties of the accesses in one B?
Yes.
Uh, that, that is a um, might turn out, turn out to be a platting issue as well. Since all of your, all of those roads in one B are not located where they are planted.
Uh, yeah, or did you say in one B?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that, and I'm not really sure how to address that issue. Um, I'm not really sure how the roads ended up where they are, to tell you the truth, that happened.
There was no
What, sixty years ago?
It's all done on a grid.
Fifty-five, fifty years ago.
You talk to the people that have been original owners here, they, they did this on a grid, they came in and put it on the land, no addressing a topography, you know, and you can't access these properties unless you have a road at a certain place, so that's what happened. And that's happened back many years ago in the sixties, so.
No, I'm, I'm aware of that, that I, I, it may have been the bulldoze driver himself who may have even mistaken where it was supposed to go. Um, but the fact is, is that you've got easements platted in everybody's backyard and nothing platted in everybody's front. So you may wind up having to fix that as an issue.
Um, maybe we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we have to get to that, but thanks for the reminder, Paul, and I think that's one of the reasons to maybe take a view on this and and
I I raised that because it may be a roadblock to this, to the metropolitan district. Um, I don't actually know. And there was one other question I wanted to ask, but that must have been it. Um, but I think that the special district, I think, would have the authority to make that replat to put the easements where the roads are.
Correct, yeah.
I would, I also um wondered, uh, and I'm not suggesting this, but have you um, have, have you ever considered asking the county to take over those roads?
Yes.
Yes.
We have tried uh several times, and uh the roads under the county has has uh not agreed to do that.
Oh, when was the last time you asked?
I, I don't know. I think We can look into that, we can look into that, and like, we can also uh discuss that issue with the uh the roads not being in a proper, or whether they're planted, we can discuss that with our attorney and see what we, see what we think. Um, and uh, you know, I guess we can, we can look into making another request to the county.
Well, I'm pretty sure that many of those roads don't meet county standards.
That's it.
That, that's one of the reasons that the county wouldn't want to, that's one of the reasons the county wouldn't want to take it over. But I also know of many roads that the county has taken over that don't meet county standards. But this would be a big bite to chew. Um, you have a lot of roads, and uh some of them aren't even built. And also, you have Ridge Road that isn't a platted road. And I don't know what kinds of legal circumstances you run into with that. So, because that road runs right through properties.
Yes, I live there. Runs through all of our properties up here, right?
Um, okay. It sounds like, okay, where are we at here? And I, and I, I am not sure with uh documentation that was sent to me, uh, if you could resend that, oh, there it is. Okay. All right, um, I, have, has, has anyone reached out uh to understand any state resources to help in the development of this, or I think that might be a really preliminary step, but you've already got legal counsel to, to guide you on some of this. Um, uh, would that be helpful?
Yes, it absolutely would. Have you been in touch with the uh Department of Local Affairs yet?
Um, no, we have not. Um, I think, don't think, they, I believe that they have a uh division, or someone does have a division that assists.
That's, that's correct.
It's the Department of Local Communities.
So, so the, the division is actually mentioned as an agency that needs to be involved in this. Um, and you should probably get ahold of that division of local affairs as soon as you can.
Paul, what's the premise of that?
Uh, well, first of all, I'm, I'm reading from thirty-two dash one dash one oh four.
Yeah.
Establishment of Special Districts File. The Division, and that, and the definition of the Division is the Division of Local Affairs uh shall promptly establish and maintain on a current basis, blah, 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 blah. So they have to be involved.
Yep.
Um, I, I'm happy to have arranged that uh, that initial conversation. Um, I know I gave kind of, I asked Christie Dune, a rep um about that, um, and she knows to expect a call, so um Darrell and Christine, if uh you want to share or give me a call, I'll put my phone number in the chat.
Okay.
We can start there also. Um, uh, so it, it sounds like with that, there are definitely some steps that you are clear on need to happen with getting the um service agreement approved and or considered. Um, I, I am not clear whether Dola needs to approve some part of that or has uh standards um for what that plan needs to look like, and whether you hit all of those in the draft that you've shared with us? Does anyone know that?
I don't. I'll go ahead.
No, okay, Commissioner Marcela just said she, she wasn't, she wasn't sure. Um, but that'll be a question for Dola, it sounds like. Although, do you have your attorneys? What, what are your? What do you need next from us, I suppose? Um, I, I think I, I'm Commissioner Fiedler and Commissioner Marcela, do you want to share whether or not you have any um issues with the pursuit of this as far as the, the direct ask um to measure kind of support?
No, I mean, for me as one commissioner, I feel like, you know, it looks like a lot of good homework has been done here. This draft service agreement looks in, I mean, having, I've done many of these, uh, but it looks like it's, you know, really well thought through and in, and in good shape, so I mean, I think you know, um, to me, it feels like it's on track and ready to start going into the formal, you know, approval process.
I would like to apologize to you all for throwing all those monkey wrenches at you. That's part of my job.
We'll work on this, Paul, thank you.
Paul, we were hoping so much, we were hoping Paul, we were hoping somebody, we were hoping nobody would ask those questions, actually.
Well, then with. Some more coordination of next steps and meetings, I mean, I think we're happy to. Get updated and or schedule meetings as, as you would need, Daryl and Christine. And we can, we can reach out to Dole ASAP. And get some, get some clarity on any other, anything else we might be missing. And we can wait for you on next requests to the board.
So we're going to have a, at the seventeenth, we're planning a meeting again, correct? Am I right about that?
We, we can, yep, we can certainly do an update then as well.
Okay, great.
And, and, and on our to-do list as commissioners is we'll check in with the departments that we. We manage and just sort of do an informal check-in.
But don't talk to Paul Clarkson. I'm just joking. Just joking. That's fine.
Okay. Cool. So I think we've got a, we've got a good plan going forward, right?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Christine, you're not the first person to have said that.
You bet not. It's okay.
All right. Um. All right, great. Well, Daryl, Christine, would you, would you give me a call or share your phone number with me to the number I put in the chat? Do you have that down? Seven one nine two nine three zero one seven seven? So then we can organize.
Yeah.
Which is the time to call. Which is the time to call.
We hang up.
Okay, all right.
All right. All right.
What did you say the number was again? I'm sorry.
Seven one nine. Two nine three. Zero one seven seven.
Okay.
All right. Um. All right, anything else for today? Doesn't look like it. All right, well, we'll plan on reconvening on the seventeenth and. Working, working towards that date. Thank you. Thanks for organizing. And again, like Mr. Fiedler has, has repeated, thanks for so much of the prep and the investment. To bring us as much information and solutions as, as you have.
Thank you for taking the time with us this morning.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right. We'll talk soon.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right. And I think we're done.
Sounds good.
All right. Take care.